To order, it is 4:00 P. M. This is a joint meeting with the school board on Monday, May 23, 2022, to discuss the budget. Madam Clerk?
I'll call the roll and I'll do the assembly first. Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers will be here in a moment. I'm expecting Dee McKee. Robert Yount.
Here.
Moki Two.
Here.
Jesse Sumner.
Here.
And I'm not sure if Assemblymember Bernier will be showing up. Thomas Bergy.
Present.
Jim Hart, are you on the phone? I'm expecting Mr. Hart to call in. Ole Larson.
Here.
Jubilee Underwood.
Here.
Ryan Ponder, are you on the phone? Also expecting Mr. Ponder to call in. Dwight Probasco.
Here.
And Jeff Taylor will not be present, but you do have a quorum of both bodies.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any changes to the agenda from the school board or from the assembly? Hearing none, and the agenda is approved. If you all stand, and I've asked Tom Bergy to leave some flags to flag it right now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is audience participation. Madam Clerk, do we have a sign-in, no sign-in sheet? Okay. Caleb, do we have people online? No? Okay. Anyone is welcome to address the assembly. On any item, doesn't have to be on the agenda. You can come and address the assembly for three minutes. Audience participation is now open. Want to come? Nobody even has a good joke to say or anything? Get ready, a little bit of attention in the air? Caleb, still nobody online? Okay. Ready? Ask chance for anyone? Go ahead and close audience participation. The next item on our agenda is joint items of business, and so we're going to have a budget discussion. Deputy Mayor? You're down there all by yourself?
So I went and met myself and Assemblymember Yount, met with the district administrative staff, and I think we had a productive discussion. I'm glad to see that the correspondence student reimbursement allocation is already being raised, and so I will be withdrawing my amendment. And I think Assemblymember Yount could speak to his.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, thanks again to Dr. Trainey and team for meeting with us. I'd say where we got, what we have right now is a good plan. It won't become an act, it won't become more than a plan until we take action. So tomorrow evening, Jesse and I will both be pulling our amendments. My goal has been, as we all know, to get the road package done without borrowing any money, so we don't have to add to the mill rate for 20 years. Another big goal of ours, I would like to see us get rid of the $586,000 a year lease for Central, and so we will be moving forward with releasing that school and the bond package needed, or at least asking this body to allow it to go forward to get rid of that. And yeah, we'll speak more to it tomorrow night, but I think we're headed in the right direction. Thanks.
Let the record show that Assemblyperson Nowers has joined us at 4:06. Was there, Caleb, was there somebody that have joined us on the phone? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay.
School Board Member Hart and School Board Member Ponder, are you on the phone? Press star two to unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm on.
Which one's that?
Ryan, was it? Or was that Hart?
Was that, was that School Board Member Hart or Ponder? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this is Member Hart. Yes, I'm on.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're still waiting for?
School Board Member Ponder is here as well. Sorry about that matter.
Okay, there we are. We got both of them now. All right, thank you. So were the two members that are on the phone, were you on the phone when Deputy Mayor and Assemblyperson Yount spoke?
This is Member Hart. I caught the tail end of it.
Okay. So maybe?
As did I. I heard it. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Both went. Provided. Thank you.
Yeah. And Stephanie, were you listening to the broadcast before you came? Okay, so if you don't mind Deputy Mayor and Assemblyperson Yount if you would restate. So I know it'll be the second time on the record, but that way everybody's on the same page and we know. Part of the program, anyway. Okay, go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Well, I'm pulling my amendment because the school district's already raising the correspondence school reimbursement allocation. I guess Rob can speak to his again.
Any other question, Yount?
Yeah, real briefly again here. So Jesse and I met with Dr. Trainey and team a few days ago and discussed the overall goals and how we could protect taxpayers. And I think the goal moving forward is tomorrow Jesse and I will both pull our amendments for his reasons that he stated mine, so that we can move forward on the roads eventually here. We were, I'm sure many of you know, we were given state match money, which is going to help a lot. And then put the possibility to the voters for the Central bond package for that school. So tomorrow night, we'll be pulling, pulling my amendment and we'll go from there.
Assembly comments further? Yes.
Madam Mayor, through the chair to the clerk, could we hear the original motion then? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, was the original motion with Assemblymember Yount and Assemblymember Sumner pulling their two amendments? What would the motion be then? That's before the borough?
This is the first, I'm hearing that they're pulling their amendments, was today, so I'll take a look on how we'll have to get rid of those amendments that were made.
And we, as you probably know, we are having a special meeting tomorrow night at 6:00. And I believe the only item that's on the agenda is our ordinance for this, for the budget for this next year. So if they pull or if somebody else has additional ones, that will be appropriate because of our advertisement, so. Anyone else have comments?
I was wondering if Mr. Probasco's question was what motion would be on the table when the amendments are pulled? If that was the gist of your question, it's the budget. So if those amendments are pulled, the entirety of the budget.
Yeah, so that's the only item we have on the agenda for tomorrow night. And so there could be other amendments coming forth. Could all be pulled or one could, you know, those two could be pulled or whatever. So, yeah, anything that would have to do with the budget. Questions, comments from anybody up here? Oh, yes.
I would just say for my part, I do not know, I do not have any additional amendments. Hope that there would be no surprises at tomorrow's meeting.
I think everybody's budgeted up to their eyebrows, I think. But, you know, we still want to go through the public process and allow people the freedom to do whatever they feel they want to do. Yes, Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also have no new amendments for tomorrow.
Comments? Deputy Mayor, go ahead, sir.
So I think maybe just to clarify what Assemblymember Yount was talking about, the plan that we would put forward would be that, see, the school district has set aside $11.9 million, I believe it is, to build Matsu Central. The plan would be that you go forward with the $1.4 million for design that you'd set aside, that you, that we move to put Matsu Central on the ballot, the bond to pay for it, that the school district transfer the remaining 10.5 to the district, excuse me, to the Matsu Borough. And if the bond passes, that we will use that money as our match for the 30 million for the state to build roads and build Matsu Central with the bond money. And that way, we can get the road package done without bonding. Matsu Central has a fund source and can move forward. It's the school district that is supposed to do design in the borough, that's supposed to do construction, so everybody's doing the appropriate thing. And I think that that's the best solution all around for all parties.
Let the record show that Assemblyperson McKee has joined us at 4:12. Yes.
Thank you. I was just wondering maybe if the superintendent might could weigh in on this, on this new plan here.
Yeah, thank you. We did have a great meeting with Assemblymember Yount and Sumner, and we kind of approached it with four goals in mind. So one, I think that the assembly shares is keeping taxes on citizenry low. So that was a shared goal. And then roads are critical infrastructure, and some of these roads directly feed into schools, so that's critical. Getting Matsu Central built is super critical. It's our largest school. We have this money saved for it. The lease runs out, we're paying $568,000 a year or something close to that. So it was important to get rid of that. And then also, in the previous, in the previous amendment, it would have immediately impacted charter schools. They would have lost about 5.3% of their operating funds for next year. And this solution checks all of those boxes, the way I understand it. So I'll be encouraging the board to transfer that money as soon as the assembly takes action and moves on. That's what the money was for. That's what the board set it aside, was for Matsu Central. And it kind of gets to kill two birds with one stone this way, because it could accomplish the roads as well as having Matsu Central built. And then I just add one thing to what Assemblymember Sumner said. Our intention would be that, to help keep taxes low on the bond, we would also be using the money that we're currently paying in rent. We would transfer that on a yearly basis? Is that how it would work? Yeah. So it feels like one of those win-win-win-win solutions.
Follow up, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so basically what I'm understanding is, rather than reducing the lump sum that we pass down to the school district, which would be basically a accounting nightmare for you guys, we are going to pass down the regular amount, and then you're going to take the 11 million that you have for CIP and transfer it back to us, which is much easier accounting to take care, take, everything fits together that way, and it's a win-win.
Yep. And it doesn't hurt the charters. Yeah, less 1.4 million for design of Matsu Central.
Assemblyperson Yount?
Yeah, just want to add a few more details in regards to Central. Our body up here has been openly outspoken in many ways against bonding. But again, when you have an opportunity to remove the $586,000 lease that I think starts stepping up by 2.5% a year here. And then one of the neat things I learned in that meeting, I think it's a good idea just to get rid of that. But one of the things I didn't realize is we have approximately 2,700 kids, sorry, in the borough who are attending either Idea or Raven, and that's money leaving our community, right? That's not staying in the Matsu Borough, which is pretty unfortunate. So I think by building Central, we'll have a good opportunity to try to bring a lot of that money back into the Matsu, which will be really good, too. So I do hope that, I hope the voters approve that in November. I know I'll do everything in my power to educate all of our voters, and I hope everybody else does, too, so that we can hopefully get that through, so.
Yes. Follow up, sir?
So what exactly would happen then if, for instance, the bond did fail? What would be the, what would be happening then? I mean, we will all hope and work for it to pass, but.
Assemblyperson Yount, go ahead.
We've been in this position once in the past with the animal care facility. If the voters said that they did not want the school, I personally would never, I would not support building it until the voters approved it. In that case, then we're, we still got roads to build, and we still got $30 million in state match money on the shelf that we need to. So I think it's a great question, and I don't get to make the final decision. Of course, we all do, but I would imagine we would continue on with the road package and then try to go back and do a better job of educating the community for next year as to why we should look at bonding Central.
Further discussion from either the assembly members or school board members?
Yes, this is Board Member Hart. Just a quick question, it's, you know, for the public's consumption. Can we have the numbers, folks, layout how much we're paying in rent and projected to pay in rent, you know, with expected rent increases versus the bond repayment? So that way the public can understand the numbers involved and how actually buying a building is more to their advantage, or bonding a building is more to their advantage than renting one. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have access, but it'll take a moment to pull it up. If I might speak to that for just a minute, Madam Mayor? I mean, the school district will be getting a brand-new facility that'd be substantially better than the current one, as well as have substantially better, or I'd imagine improved parking. But, but also, it could be reasonably expected that the lease payments will increase every year, and in particular, in two years when they have to renegotiate that contract or extend on a, on a year-to-year, there might be a sharp increase. Whereas the amount we would be asking them to yearly contribute would be a fixed amount. So I would think that would be a significant financial advantage and improvement in facilities.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Member Sumner. I'm just, what I'm suggesting is like for the messaging, as far as when we get out there to tell folks, hey, listen, here's why you need to approve this bond. You know, getting those numbers out front early, you know, and often will help out with that, because if we don't, you know, yeah, we can say, we can say these things, it makes sense, but until you show it, you know, show it to them, you know, show them the numbers and have them easily accessible, it, you know, it kind of falls flat a little bit. So that's why I was asking if we can get those numbers out for the public and an easy to digest more. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Yount?
Yeah, that's a great point to raise or to bring up, Mr. Hart. So a couple more things to, we'll have to consider moving forward is, one, what's the amount going to be? We won't really be able to finalize that until, until the design is done, right? So the next big step is the design. And then what are the interest rates going to be and some other things that we'll have to take into consideration at that time? But yeah, before we start trying to educate the community on why they should support it, we definitely should need those numbers, but some of them we won't have back for a little bit longer here.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
If I may, I'd like to have our manager speak to, if it's all right. Well, give him a minute, it's okay. But if you could give us an update on the, on moving forward, right? So we could have it out of the assembly, hopefully by X, to the voters, the bond language, and then estimated timing on design, when, when the design would be done. That way we can, you know, anything you think we need to know for timing-wise moving forward to get us through November. And then if it does go well in November, my last question would be, do you anticipate we could start construction in the spring?
Through the mayor to Mr. Yount. I'm going to defer to the school district on the design timeline, since that's going to be a contract that they're overseeing. I was just talking to the clerk about the ballot language, or having that approved to put on the fall ballot. It's in the August timeframe. It seems unlikely that design would be done by then, so we will probably have to develop cost estimates with a more preliminary design than a completed design, based on that timeline. I would imagine, generally speaking, you could probably get to a point where you could bid something out in the spring. But I'll defer at this point and see if the district has any thoughts on that. We're looking at a January 2023 timeframe for the design to be done. It might be a little longer than that, but at this point, that's, that's our hope, and that's what we're contracting for.
Assemblyperson Yount?
Okay, to follow up then to Manager Brown or whoever he thinks should answer it then. Not having the design back until January and us going out to the community prior to that, can we write the language in a way that it would allow us to go to a certain amount, but not beyond that? I think that'd be the safest thing to tell people is that there's no way we're going to go above this amount, and hopefully we can stay under it, but.
So through the mayor to Mr. Yount. I don't think it's unprecedented to put a ballot initiative out without having completed designs. I think the $214 million bond was all done that way. I don't think there were any designs that were done when that ballot measure was put together. So I think the district has the ability and the capacity to cost estimate that in a reasonable way. I mean, that's how it's done through the state process with deed, anyway. So I think it's reasonable that we would have something together. It is an aggressive timeline, because I mean, if, if we do bond, you're talking about a ballot measure in the fall, early spring or winter sale on bonds, considering the conditions, and then being able to fund, verify, and go out for a construction contract in the middle of winter. I mean, you see how that's all going to be in a very tight window. I think it's possible, but we'll have to hit our marks in a number of different places. I mean, we won't even have a certified election till December, so the ability to even set up a bond sale and bring that before the assembly and execute that by February is, is pretty aggressive. Not impossible, just would have to be well-coordinated.
We should have a tentative of like a 50% on the design package before the, or even 75% before the election, correct? So we'll know what it looks like and have a tentative amount of what it would cost.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Tony Wies, our construction manager.
No, Member Larson. So in the design bid, we included cost estimates at 35, 65, and 95%. So we would be at that 65% design estimate, and that'll be a professional cost estimate evaluated at that time, so, yeah.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, we're talking about having to have that drafted for the legislation in early August. So having it in November for the election won't change anything. So you're really looking at what is your estimate at the end of July as we bring that, you know, that ordinance forward for introduction of public hearing.
So are you going to put your magic hat on and figure out how much it's going to cost before then? Before August?
Through the mayor to Mr. Larson. I, as I said, the district's done cost estimating before for ballot measures without having any design. So I don't think it's, I mean, obviously, there's a little bit of risk, but we just did it with, we just put together a road package and put it on a ballot without having any designs complete. So it's not ideal, but it's kind of difficult to pay for design when you don't have approved funding for it. So it sounds like what we will have is at least a preliminary estimate to inform what that would cost, and I think that would be reasonable. Reasonable for the end of July for us to take what we have and bring that before the assembly for consideration.
You're going to have a, what is it, $550,000? How much is the rent?
Annual rent currently for two different properties for Matsu Central, one in Wasilla, one in Palmer. It's about $530,000 for the property in Wasilla, and it's about $60,000 a year for the property in Palmer. The idea is that this new facility replaces both leases. So it's about, in total, it's just under $590,000.
So at $590,000, if you bond for X amount of years, you should be able to somehow estimate if that amount of money is going to cover like 75 or 80%? That's what the, that's what the voters are going to look at. How much is that rent going to pay for that bond? Is it 75, 80, or 90%? It should be up there, I would assume. I guess, can you go backwards and look at it that way or not?
Through the mayor to Mr. Larson. Obviously, there's a lot of variables. I think by the time, if the assembly wanted to put something before the voters, obviously, as we go into, say, September and October, we would have some pretty good information we could share out based on current market conditions as to how much that would actually finance of the total debt service payment. I would, I'm really reluctant to try to speculate now on whether that's 50%, 70%, or 80%. I don't know, but I think, obviously, as we went into the election, we would have some better information we could share with voters that would help reassure them that we have at least a partial plan, and whether that's 50% or 75%, I think we'd have a much better sense by then.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that the clerk has expressed concerns about opening all of the precincts if she doesn't have to, since we now compete with the state for election workers. I was wondering if maybe we should maybe set a special election in the wintertime for this, or if she would have any recommendations on whether or not to put it in the general, or, you know, if, if we were later in the year, we could have, we could, we could have more of a cost estimate ready as well.
Madam Clerk?
We'll say to Assemblymember Hale, ultimately, it's the assembly's decision, but we do have problems getting election officials. Right now, we're actually doing pretty good for July, which I'm surprised. But we'll probably lose at least, I would say, 40 to 50% of those people to the state in November. So that would be at least 60 people that we'll need to recruit, and we have a hard enough time as it is, just to let the, that part of what, so the assembly knows that and the school board. Just to let the, that part of what, so the assembly knows that and the school board.
Through the mayor.
Through the mayor to the clerk, don't we have five school board seats up for elections? So I mean, five of our districts are going to be open anyway. And I, I didn't really look at the overlap, but are, isn't, isn't one of the, uh, assembly races in a district that doesn't have, I mean, won't it be six districts out of seven open anyhow?
I don't think, I think it's going to be five, so we're going to have a little bit more than normal open than, when we usually, when we don't have the mayor on the ballot. So those are things we're going to have to work through as it is.
Well.
Because I think what you're saying is District One doesn't have a vacant school board, but we do have vacant assemblies.
Right, and then five, and then five district, uh, school board seats. So that would mean that six out of the seven districts are going to be up for, I mean, we're only saving one district by not having an area wide question on the ballot. So I, I figure we might as well, really.
The assembly.
Yeah, I forgot we had that many school board seats open this year.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
This is member Ponder, ju- just for clarification, I'm so sorry, just one more time on the record. Did Assemblymember Sumner say there were five school board seats open on this next election due to the boundary changes?
Not necessarily to, due to the boundary change.
Part of those are for the boundary change, part is just the rotation of your, um, limitation of school board seats.
That's right, there are three up for election and then the other two, okay. Thank you, I appreciate that clarification and boy, what that will do for the school board. All right, thank you very much.
Hopefully you sleep well tonight.
Assemblyperson Yon.
I just wanted to mention that because the state will not be participating in this school, that we don't need to meet deed requirements or anything. And I know most of us are aware of that, but I think it'll make the taxpayers happy to know that we can create a good designing plan just amongst our bodies and not have Juno telling us what to do, so.
Were there any discussion, questions? Assembly members or school board, yes, Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
Um, can you tell me, and I'm, I'm sure this figure's been thrown out there a thousand times, how many people attend, and I'm putting that in your quotes, uh, Matsu Central? How many clients do they have?
Yeah, through the mayor to Assemblymember McKee, this year we have about 2,700 students enrolled in, on the average week. It's around 600 in person in any given week, is that? 2,300 enrolled.
2,300? And I understand that part of the attraction of this whole package that we're talking about is to get some of those people from Pace and Raven, is that kind of what we're looking for too?
Yeah, that's certainly a goal. We're also working with, uh, some of the, some of the private schools in Anchorage for next year.
Do we know what Pace and Raven have for clients, I'm going to use that word, students, numbers?
Yeah, it's also around 2,700 students, they're Matsu students that go to other statewide correspondent schools, mostly Pace and Raven and Idea.
So, ha, so then we're going to actually have a brick and mortar school as the term goes?
Well, it's not, it's, I, I wouldn't call it a brick and mortar school anymore than it is now. It's definitely a hybrid program. Um, so students and their families will choose that kind of, uh, delivery of instruction because they want in-person learning, but not the way it happens in a traditional brick and mortar where it's the same class at the same time every day. If you think about secondary, they might come in, they may do that, or they may come in for brief periods of time, weeks at a time, um, special projects. And so it's just a far more flexible model than, than the traditional brick and mortar model.
And, and I get that, but, but, and I, I'm curious, do we have any indication? Maybe that's not imaginable, but do we have any indication of what we could expect of those 2,700 other folks that might come in our direction, have they said, geez, if you just build a bigger school, we just come?
Yeah, I do, I do think there's a little, I don't think we have an estimate of how many might come, but there is, there is, you know, that if you build it, they will come, um, that nice shiny building. Uh, you know, when you look at the current facility, when you walk in, they've done amazing things in the current facility, but I don't hear anybody saying like, man, this place is the very best. So we aren't wowing them with just the facility that we have and that we've had for 30 years, like it needs an upgrade. I was at, sorry, I feel my soapbox. I was, I was at, um, the graduation for Matsu Central, um, this last week. And in one of the valedictorian speeches, one of the, one of the students, she mentioned this very thing about how, um, there's just not a lot of room for classes in the building. I think she said, there's only two spaces that they are big enough to have larger groups anyhow. Like even, even 18-year-olds are picking up on like, there's a better facility probably than this one.
So obviously that's going to require more staffing?
No, I don't think there's any.
Just more rooms?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Changing direction a little bit, but it looks like the reading bill is going to make it. And I was wondering if you guys, anybody that could speak to that and how that could affect our community?
Um, that's a big one. Um, we were, we were talking about that briefly before. Um, there are some parts of it that involve pre-K. And we were just, we just received the first update on that this morning. There's not going to be any money for that next year, it's going to start in 2024. It's a limited amount of money, um, for, only for pre-K kindergarten, pre-K programs that, uh, that meet their qualifications. I have more questions than answers about that. There's also money in there for transporting, um, pre-K students. We have more questions than answers about that. Um, but in general, we think it's a good bill. Anything that, um, is going to have, you know, set the standard high for students to be able to read by third grade, that's fantastic. And then there's lots of intricacies that we don't quite understand. We are going to get an update from, um, our folks who were in Juno at Wednesday's board meeting. So I'm looking forward to hearing that.
Assemblyperson McKee, thank you.
Thank you. I was, I, I saved an article because I knew all this was coming up. Um, in an interview that Dunleavy had, he cited Alaska's worst in the nation, I'm reading from the paper, worst in the nation reading test scores, repeating an argument often made by political conservatives that it makes little sense to boost spending on schools without simultaneously pursuing reforms. And he said, I would have to have a much deeper conversation with the educational community as to what our goal is with everything we're doing. Everything seems to finally, I, I, and maybe feels to me like at long last, we're kind of getting a little more laser focused. And I, it makes me just a little nervous if we just keep doing what we've been doing and aren't able to show results. Oh, I think that's my, excuse me. Um, it, that, that, that worries me a little bit. So, so this reading bill that you're talking about, oh dear, I'll get there. I wish I knew who this was, that's why I could tell them not to call me that, but anyway, it's a number I don't know. So the, everything is, is this the year that we're actually going to do this? Because like, if I were investing money in a corporation that kept losing every year, I would, I'd simply take my money and go somewhere else. I'm just, I'm so hesitant to continue on the path that we've been on for the last many years and not seeing any, any change. How do you feel about, I guess that's an opinion kind of a question, isn't it?
Um, I'm going to, I'm going to make an argument that in Matsu, like that, the worst in the nation, that's from the NAEP test, which is a random, um, selection of schools across the country from each state and then the data is published for the state. So it's true that Alaska ranks at the bottom or near the bottom, depending on which test and which grade, um, as a state. And then I spoke to the board at our last board meeting about, um, while that's true, on the statewide measures, Matsu Borough School District, uh, is considerably better than the rest of the state. But what I couldn't argue is that we're better than most of the country. So like, I can sort of agree and sort of disagree. Um, here's the one part where I can point to some stuff that is already changing. Like this year, we, we have a really fantastic, uh, career technical education program that's been built over more than a decade here in Matsu. Um, this year was the most students ever involved in career technical education. At the same exact time, we have more than twice as many students who took advanced placement courses in the same year. So we have this super fantastic career technical ed program and, and I am using the word and purposefully, and we are developing this other side of our house that has really been underrepresented for our students. And that's like the college side. So it's college and career or career and college, not or. And I feel like for a long time we've been or. And so we're, it takes a long time to turn around a ship of 20,000 students and 3,000 employees when you count the substitutes. Uh, but I do think that we're already heading that direction. And I agree, you know, like, there's no time like right now to keep, to keep changing things. So I applaud what they did with the reading bill, but we aren't waiting for the reading bill, whether it passed or not. Um, I'm going to be, uh, suggesting some changes to the board. In fact, Wednesday for next, at, at this Wednesday's meeting for next year, um, to, to address this exact same thing. When I look at our data, man, I feel my soapbox is coming out. When I look at our data over a long period of time, we've stayed pretty flat. Like we're better than most of the state, we're a good district in the state of Alaska. But I can't look at anybody and say we're the best in the country and we need to be the best in the country. I don't know why we can't be.
If I have time, could I ask one more question? Sure. Thank you. This is a question that's really uncomfortable because people say, by the way, if I could teach in charter schools, that's exactly where I'd be, uh, but I've been at this a while, so I'll probably stay where I am. Um, every dollar that goes other than to public schools in general, e- e- everything that goes to charter schools and whatever, doesn't go to public schools and in the, in the, in the common usage of that word. Is that a problem here? Because are we funding charter schools and, and the, um, Matsu Central and that to the detriment of the generally considered public school process?
So is, just so I understand the question, is the question like, is, is the fact that we give some of the money to the charter schools and Matsu Central, is that negatively impacting the other schools? Is that the question?
Kind of, yeah, and, and I know that that's out there.
When I look at the data, I don't think, oh man, we'd really be killing it if we weren't giving Matsu Central and Academy their fair share of the money. Like I, I don't point to that as what our problem is.
What is our problem then?
Well, I think there's probably multiple, but one that I've said a lot is, um, those absurd aspirations. And I just think it's, this is an adult issue and we have to want more than we have wanted for the kids. Maybe not want, expect, expect more of them. And so like another example of turning the ship around, last year, the school board increased graduation requirements for, you know, this year's freshman class. It's arguably probably one of the most difficult diplomas in the state of Alaska now. That's an example of setting the expectations hard, higher for students. And really, it's not for students, students will do what you ask them, it's really expectations for adults. But back to the question, I don't think us funding Matsu Central or us funding any of our charter schools is like, aha, that's the smoking gun. I don't think that's it at all.
Yeah. Well, I just, I don't know, just we, I guess we got to figure out what the heck it is that we can do for the, for, for the restroom. Because I think the char- charter schools obviously have to be doing well because they're pretty close to the private school model that I went to. And, um, that's got to mean something, so, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of build on the conversation happening here. I, I can speak to the last eight years of having high schoolers here in the borough. Um, I've seen it get harder and that's in a, that's in a good way. I think the school board and the superintendent are doing an awesome job. So we've seen the addition of four Cs, we've seen more opportunities for career and trades. Um, um, they're requiring more credits now than before, there's more AP requirements. And so it seems to me like it's really making a big difference in the high school level. Um, so I, I applaud what you guys are doing. Um, and when I was elected, they've, they've supported me on this, but we realized we had a huge labor shortage. Um, it's really hard to get young people into EMS and fire. So I worked with Ken and team and we put together a two-year program that is now been approved by these guys and will be rolling out at Wasilla High School this next year for the pilot program. When you get done with two years of that, you'll come out with all your certifications you need to basically work for a fire department anywhere in the country, they're all national certifications. I personally think these guys are doing an awesome job of, of, you, you can't do it overnight. You can't just say you got to go from this to that overnight, but I, I do definitely think we're headed in the right direction. And I've got to witness it myself, um, with my high school kids the last, you know, few years and so, yeah, leave it at that.
First, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, um, one thing, I just wanted to respond to that last in the country. I think it's, um, not helpful to lump Matsu in with that last in the country. If you're a teacher and you have a kid who's the bottom of the class and really struggling, you're going to teach that kid differently than a kid who's in the middle. You know, they've got different issues going on if a kid can't read at all or if they're just kind of struggling with the longer words. So, um, in terms of being smart, uh, from a school perspective, how we get better, I think it's good to know that Matsu is, there's room for improvement, but we've got, we're about average in the country. So how we approach that, you know, I think there's a lot of, we're last, just fix it by cutting the budget. That's going to fix it. Well, let's be honest about where we're at in Matsu and look at what's working and what's not. And to that extent, I think the school board and the school district are always trying to, to, you know, look at that. And they're dealing with a lot of poverty. Well, you see it in your classroom, you're more than just a teacher. You're doing a lot of social things for the kids too, and some more than others. Um, our schools are asked to do a huge amount. And, uh, you know, this whole issue of, of how we do better, we do have a joint school board assembly meeting, you know, subcommittee. And I think people are welcome to come to that or if you have questions, the people who serve on that, Mr. Two and myself could bring those to them. Um, but since we have everybody here, I'll throw in my two cents because I think it's a really good discussion to have. You know, I, I've had two kids, I just had my youngest graduate and, um, I think we do a lot of testing and we change it every two years. And I've seen that for my, for my teachers, for my kids, they spend all the time teaching for the test. And then there's a test and then there's a new test, so we can't compare them. And it seems like a lot of way, you know, I think about the amount of dollars, oh, and there's the analysis of the test. The amount of dollars that goes into that instead of putting another teacher in the classroom or a helper. I, I really think we could do some follow-up and see where our kids land. I, we get them to graduate, but nobody follows up as far as I know to see where they are. Like how are we doing and tout and find some of those success stories and talk to the kids, what did you not get? I mean, my daughter just graduated and she's like, I don't know the difference between a credit and a debit card. Well, I'll give her that, but not everybody has that in their homes to, to help them through that, some of those basic skills. Um, that they might give us some good feedback, you know, user, user, the end user. And then, uh, you know, just the, I don't think we tout our successes enough. There's this mantra that we're terrible and the kids aren't learning. And we have some amazing kids that come out of this district, national merit finalists, um, folks who do the IB diploma, AP, and, um, I think we could do more to tout some of that, you know, for those folks who are wondering, are we doing anything good? Um, to make sure you get that part of the story, yeah, we got work to do, but we also have some amazing kiddos coming out of it. So, um, I just, I know the, the schools get burdened with a lot of complaints, but I also have seen it as a parent in the schools, the amount of stuff that the, the staff and the teachers you're dealing with on a daily basis that goes way beyond just the ABCs, so.
School board member underway.
Um, yeah, I was wondering if we could just, just briefly for the people that were at the last school board meeting, I was really encouraged, um, when Dr. Training was talking about the summer and teachers rigorously getting trained, going kind of back to the basics on phonics when it comes to reading. And for the people that weren't at the school board meeting, just since she had asked about, um, like what are we doing better? Just to give a brief example to people that weren't there at the meeting, maybe Dr. Training can just touch on it, on, on what the teachers will be studying for when it comes to phonics. You know, we have to start at the, the younger age to turn the ship too, so we can produce better and better young adults going into our community. So like what is happening with the younger kids that will impact for future generations?
Um, yes, uh, so as an example, I spoke at the last board meeting about a, um, a statewide conference that more than 100 people from Matsu attended, we had over 10% of the people there. And it, and it's about the science of reading. And it, and it's about the science of reading. And that's being incorporated into bigger plans, and they're already in action. In fact, tomorrow is the first day of SAMs, which is the Summer Academy at Mat-Su, and there'll be hundreds of employees there doing summertime learning, including all of our principals, and all of the people from Office Instruction will be there tomorrow. And really, one of the things we're focusing on is teacher clarity, and I know this, this, you know, it's one of those education buzzwords, but it really comes down to four simple questions. The first question is teacher clarity. What do we want students to learn? Feels really obvious, but frankly, that's not consistent across our district. An Algebra I class in Wasilla, and an Algebra I class in Palmer, and another one out at Sioux Valley, they all get a grade in Algebra I, but those aren't the same from class to class or room to room. There's not, there's, there's not any real consistency that it happens with, so it's, what do we want kids to learn? It's this, we need the adults to understand the standards and teach to the standards. So you'll hear us say things like, "Standards, not standardization." If, once you establish what you want them to know, then you establish the common assessment, how do I know if they've learned it? And then the last two parts are, and what do I do if they don't learn it, and what do I do if they do learn it? And that's really going to be the overarching change. I know it sounds super simple, but we haven't been very systematic about that in the past.
Board member Larson, go ahead.
And if you want to talk to the testing, we've been looking at the testing and what, if you want to talk about what we've been talking about there.
Yeah. I've reached out to the Commissioner of Education on this testing issue with it, like, well, we're going to always have testing, it's always going to be part of it. And so like, NAEP, that's federal, we don't have any choice in that. And then there's a state test, and we haven't, we really don't have any choice in that, except we might have influence on that one, and at least for our older kids, okay, well, if we're going to have a state test that they have to take, could we at least make that test something that was valuable to the student and their parents? No one ever leaves high school and an employee or, or a college says, "Hey, tell me how you did on your Alaska Peaks test." I don't think it's ever happened. But they do ask, "How'd you do on your PSAT? How'd you do on your SAT?" And so we've at least started that conversation with, I understand you just signed a big contract with the new test, but could there also be an option for a district, if they wanted to, to substitute these other tests like the SAT and the ACT? So we could at least reduce that testing, because many of our kids are taking those anyhow, right? The school board has expressed a huge interest on having all of our kids take those. So we might be able to reduce some of the testing at the older grades.
McKee?
I wanted to ask, too, about social promotion, and I, I know I sound like a broken record on that, but yet, if, if it, it's like math, if they don't get it at this step, they're not going to get it at this step, and so you're constantly in a hole. As I understand it, we stop doing the holding, holding back of kids somewhere around the third grade or something like that, and you can make the stats say anything you want, but, you know, they say, "Well, you know, if you hold them back, it'll hurt their feelings" or something. I don't know what it is, but I can tell you that when you get kids in middle school who don't know, who can't multiply beyond three times, whatever, and they have tremendous problems with reading, it's, I think it's not fair to send a kid on to the next grade if he hasn't what he got, what he's needed in the grade before. And you'll have kids flatly tell you, "You can't hold me back unless my parent says so." And we know that that's true. And so it's like, reluctantly say, "Okay." But they, they come out of grade school not knowing, they go through middle school, they get into high school, they don't know, and they get into college, and college says, "Now we got to test them for the basics before we can actually let them into credit, you know, programs with credits in them." Is there no way to stop that runaway train of mind? Why does social promotion hold it in back? Why do we do that?
Well, I'm not sure that the problem of social promotion is one that really is a huge problem in Mat-Su. Like, when you look at all the data across, I don't, I don't have lots of principals coming to me saying like, "Man, I really want to hold these blank kids back, but we're just going to let them go because you're making me." There's also lots of data in the, you know, the peer-reviewed research that holding students back, when you, when you like, look at what happens in the long term, they end up failing at a bigger rate than the ones that were advanced. But I really think all that is like, missing the point. The point is, what are we doing with them while they're here? It's not just socially promoting them or holding them back. That's not the cure either direction. It's what are you doing with the kid while they're in? And, and that's just circling back to what we were just talking about, making changes in how, in expectations that the adults have for kids. The kids will do it. We just need to change our expectation and our focus. And this isn't a matter of effort, and I know you know this because you've been in the schools, this isn't a matter of teachers not working. They're working. It's just focus. We need to change our focus.
Question? Want to comment, and, or do you want to have some more questions? Comments, then? So we'll start with the school board. Tom, do you have comments? Pardon comments, sir?
No comments, Madam Mayor.
Jim Hart, are you still on the phone, sir? Do you have some parting comments?
No comment. Thank you.
Ryan, are you still there? Do you have parting comments?
I am, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to come together to discuss some of these different things that were brought up just a short time ago at a public meeting. Appreciate the Assembly for giving us the opportunity, and appreciate Assemblymember Yount and Assemblymember Sumner for discussing their questions and concerns with the school district, and glad we're able to hold this meeting and be able to proceed forward. Thank you so much.
Comments, sir?
Yeah, I do appreciate the joint meeting. However, if there's questions in the future, which I, I think we'll do a little bit better from the borough, I know our staff are always open, as well as the school boards are always open to the discussion, and to work endlessly for the sole purpose of, of educating kids. And remember, Borough Assembly, I don't know how many times I've been told over the years that you're the higher board, so you should reach down to the lower board and, and discuss these issues, and don't make decisions on the upper board without the knowledge, is all I'm trying to say. I'm trying to say that politely, okay? But I do appreciate the work that, that you do. And, well, and I know our budget looks huge, but we do have a, almost 20,000 kids to educate. So, thank you.
School board.
We're just thankful for this opportunity tonight for the lower board to meet with the upper board and talk about this budget. Thank you.
School board member underway? Pardon comments?
Yes. I do appreciate just, I think that things are accomplished better when people can sit down and have good conversations. So I do appreciate the Assembly members sitting down and meeting with the school board members and going over things in details, because just having meetings every once in a great while, a couple of times a month, it seems like it can't always be as productive as being able to sit down and get to the bottom of stuff. And it seems like everybody basically has the same heart, that we want to educate the kids, and we want to have a really successful borough with safe roads, and, and get really good, productive young adults into our community. So I appreciate everybody working together just to save our taxpayers' money, but then also know that the product that they are paying into is actually producing for our community. So, thank you.
Pardon comments from any member?
No, just thank you for this opportunity, and thanks again to Assemblymember Yount and Sumner for meeting with us.
Pardon comments from Borough Administration? Anybody? Yes, go ahead. Mark?
I'm sure the Assembly members, we have a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00, but I just looked through the notice of vacancies. That's not due. We're probably going to be working on it next week. I did forget District 7 is up also, so Assemblymember Sumner was correct. And since I've come up here to say Assemblymember Sumner is correct, I'm going to implore everybody to please find us election officials. Anybody that wants to see how an election is run, please just have them fill out an application. We'd really appreciate it.
Also from the administration, attorney, manager? No? Do you have pardon comments, ma'am?
Well, I'm an internal optimist. I, I'm encouraged by the dialogue. I hope that we follow through, because as somebody said, I hope that Mark Twain or somebody, you know, insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting it to go differently. I hope, it, it feels like we're not going down that road this time. I'm, I'm in the trenches, and I'm hopeful.
No comment.
No pardon comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to give a big shout out, congratulations to all the graduates for 2022, including my daughter Eliza, and hopefully somebody will tell her I called her out by name at this meeting and really embarrassed her. But I want to thank the, the school district for providing her with a high-quality high school education.
John, pardon comments, sir?
Yeah, as we move forward with the design, whenever you guys get the 35%, if you could please get it over to Manager Brown, so we could keep, kind of start moving the voters along and educating them on, on what could be before them in November. And bull in a china shop, we've all heard that, so I want to publicly apologize for me taking that approach. I had my nose in the book so long on that amendment, focused on all the, going all the way back to the 90s and coming forward, that I do regret not just going down, sitting down with the superintendent and letting them know the direction I was going in, but there's a lot of things that we have to take into consideration. It's typically Ron. I'm glad tonight it's not one of our Assemblymembers. I think that's one of your, it's, it's typically Ron that's doing that, but anyhow, it, yeah, we got a lot of things that we got to take into consideration, too, road, like roads, fire, EMS, mil rate. And the one thing that we can take for granted, at least I think I can as a parent, is the way that you guys do educate our kids. I've spoke to this a lot in the past. I've spoken at school board meetings, the way you guys handled as a team getting through COVID and everything else, and, and the requirements getting harder for high schoolers. I, I could, I tell everybody how lucky we are to have the school board that we have. I honestly feel like this is the best place in the country to live and educate kids. You know, I'm sure things, you know, like Ms. McKee said, there's areas that we can find and get better, but the one thing that we can take for granted, at least me, is that side of it. And so I, I'm not trying to dive into the day-to-day operations here, trying to make some financial sense and, and get some good stuff done. So I appreciate everybody's help, and Luke and Dr. Trainey for meeting with us. It was an awesome, productive meeting, and thank you, guys.
Assemblyperson hours?
I'm not liking the lower upper board. Thinking like, maybe the North Palmer board, the South Palmer board, Upper Palmer, Lower Palmer. I'm glad we're back on track. Seems like we've got a good solution here. That'll help us get schools going and not put operating funds in jeopardy. You know, I just think all these discussions are good to have. I try to listen to the school board meetings, but I don't always get to all of them. Thank goodness they're recorded, but, you know, maybe getting updates as well on just these issues. I think academic performance is just the huge thing we get beat up on all the time, and not always rightly. So kind of knowing how we're trying to tackle that. We are not the body that's choosing the curriculum, we're not that, but we're the funders, and we're responding to the community. And the more we can kind of tout what's going on, I think that helps us all get on the right, better track. So it's a good discussion. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the school board and the district staff for all coming out. I'm glad we could come to a more amicable solution on this. I really do think this will be a win-win for everybody. The school will get its full local contribution for operating funds. We can do our match for the $30 million of state legislative grant road money, and do our whole bond package without, or our whole transportation package without bonding, and we can build Mat-Su Central. So, yeah, I think this is the best solution for everybody, and thank you.
I just want to thank everybody also for coming out. Dialogue is always good. And so with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 5:05.